Scott.
Okay. Well, if he's got the number, all he's gotta do is call it in. He doesn't have to go through this. Transfer. Right. I think it'll, it'll pick up just fine right there on your microphone. I've got the speaker turned off. It's feedback looking on a lot of our other, other equipment, but it is still on for an office. It just isn't out here.
Hey Bob?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we're about to, we're, we're about to get started.
Okay.
Okay, let me call the special session of Benning County Commissioner's Court order on Tuesday, April the seventh at nine oh seven AM. Now, form is established with all the members present with the exception of Commissioner West. He is not here today. So form is established, on the word. Item number two, discuss and consider approving or amended the first amended proclamation declaring a local disaster in Benning County. As you know, you have before you on copy of the first amendment proclamation declaring a local disaster that I signed April the first. Once I declare a local disaster proclamation, then it is good for seven days. We need seven days, we need to come back. Commissioner's Court had approved it as a court. So that's the only item that's on the agenda today. Do we want to approve of our amendment? The order, so that's what, and that's the only item that's on the agenda, is the discussion and consider approving for me is the first amendment proclamation declaring a local disaster.
Seven days, that'd be the next meeting on fifteenth then?
Uh, I declared it on the first, it, and, and I believe it expires tomorrow night.
So it'll be seven days from tomorrow night?
No, seven, yes, because this order, this, this order here is dated that it will expire uh, on the fifteenth? Yes, the first one, yeah, they said I hereby declare a local disaster, uh, site of disaster, they're convincing the county to continue until April the fifteenth, so, and we have a commissioner's court on the fifteenth. So if you, if you approve of this, you would be approved to extend it until April the fifteenth, April the fifteenth will be completed. Which is, I'd say. Any questions or discussion on that? Yeah, Bob is joining on the, uh, Bob, is there anything? Uh, did you, you made a rest for?
Okay, well, thank you very much, first of all, I think we, that's, uh, 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 uh,
Okay, Bob, is there anybody you can, uh, we were having trouble, uh, let me see if I can get my microphone.
Well, the speaker's on.
Okay, uh, okay, go ahead, Bob.
Do you hear me now?
Bob, speak as loud as you can, please.
... conversations with the governor who said that is on his best is that the issue of social distancing is that it's the best tool we can have. When someone has a few people accept the fact that there are sixty best out there that can't be used, um, they're taking the position they're on now. And so we're we're maybe get close to overcoming that, but some of the old doctors that actually use to give control, I I hope that's what's been placed. But at the meantime, the idea of of shutdown, or to try and minimize the hotspots for transmission of uh uh costs and other things, but that was a lot behind the initial of uh place of really gain control of this one they did decide to do. But he didn't let us as far as to be able to uh create the best action. And so with the best not to talk about what it's intended for, and how to handle it. And what I think happens in the other areas of our state is when it's common sense to, okay, how do we achieve the social distancing without having to keep the attitude of uh people punished for for business and that's why I put this down, not here if you shut it down and not shut another down. For those, one has good rule problems, social distancing, the other has their own. Uh, we we tend to go back to this, uh, but we got it fair if you spread the hate of our people, I think they go with this shutdown, I thought you shut everyone down. And what I think will help our economy most is to ultimately shut down those businesses at that, it could, but uh necessarily couldn't people be in a close process. I mean, we definitely the open to the biggest uh opportunities for uh spreading, that's what I've heard from schools in Boston, just I mean, doing the people in there are best best warming of spreading, that people going into a candy store or to a flower shop are are not playing golf or business. Uh, so when you move people outside uh in the sunshine, that that's one of the things that the medical got uh drew revenue on, those people getting outside, doing exercise, and and getting uh sexed by, there's something that that will affect their system, that helps contribute, that's definitely what they can do to bring up some more. And so uh hopefully what we're doing is and definitely how we do this is not just rubber stamped, but is uh, I got I mentioned this law that I called in, people's discretion is uh, we had all our judgment, everything was a advantage or a sentence, we proved we got our solution, uh, we would have uh a real disaster, and so we discretion. And I think that the government did for counties, cities, use discretion, that that's if they're you very correctly did want to do a one size fits all for the state of Texas. I believe all of it, that uh, that was one size fits all for the state of Texas, just never worked, uh, throughout the state, between the rural and the basic city. So he he wanted to give discretion where it made sense. And how how are you, uh, I mean, one thing, uh, in a small part, but I mean, if Dallas, where people could be standing next to each other, or even base, help close offices, but out here, where we are, it shouldn't be a problem. Uh, there's no way, any way to deal with other people. And any wrong things the same way, or in stores, people visit, or it's like flower shops, and what stores play for that nature? Uh, I think the fine thing is that do the best best sort of people that uh uses some common sense, and uh, and what that is, if you don't deserve or be collateral to all this, they're coming, they shut down to create what what others like that has said, and others that was trying to correct that, we can't ever cure the force of the 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 problem. And that's what we have to be careful with. So I would over these things to say, they should give emphasis, consideration to, is this really necessary? The because we gotta, we gotta assert this much wider time, yeah, you know, that's the only, either make one business go out, this is this problem, we need another to allow. Uh, and hopefully we will get through it here in this next one. At least have a pattern set up, so if those are right, and we're gonna sign, we'll push a couple of times, uh, uh, we we do it, it's good common sense. And so that that's my experience. I appreciate your wisdom, Senator, and uh, appreciate the opportunity to serve you guys.
Okay. If you'll stay on the phone, do anyone have any questions for Bob?
Yes, Senator, uh, Paul, thank you so much for for talking to us this morning, and I appreciate you very much. I think we're trying to address one issue at a time, and I think today we're trying to address physical activities. And uh, I do, uh, I do somewhat agree, we need to, we are to to expand our physical activities, and uh, I I think I've got a proposal here, uh, Judge, uh, I don't know how you would react to it, but I would like to add in section seven to our order, it says, it says engaging in other essential outdoor activities, providing the individual compliant with social distancing requirement of six feet, for example, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, golfing, and tennis, unless this order uh supersedes, uh, unless the governor uh or supersede this order. I don't know, it may supersede, the governor's order may supersede this order. But uh, that's, we can talk about, I mean, that's, we can talk about it.
Sure, if you might.
That's that's very good, and it's very, uh, what what a person wants to leave the counties and cities to do, and and it was especially at the past full times that uh, it's uh, uh, it's certainly applying in the spirit of that. In the in the case, I would say that uh, where where many people were really, is that uh, just who could close uh the state parks? And and because we had to develop very specific problems in our state parks, if we didn't have any resources to be able to do it. And uh, and so we have been temporarily, which I keep the temporary closure of the state parks. So that that probably even influence the state parks. Uh, so it's brought access to the people on the state court, whatever, yeah, no, uh, we were well within our limits, and that's what that's what we do.
Bob, we are also in attendance is our district attorney, Tom Curry. Uh, Mr. Curry, you may address the court or Bob, either one.
That's that's fine, Judge, I'll I'll address the court, I don't know where a good microphone is, if it pick me up.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's okay.
So our county emergency management plan puts me in a very unenviable position of having to interpret, legally interpret, give a legal opinion and advise the commissioner's court on the governor's order. In my legal opinion, there is no one in this county, myself, commissioners, or the county judge, or any other person, who has the ability to over, the power to overrule the governor's order. The governor's order says, non-essential businesses are closed. Here's your list of essential businesses. It is on the Department of Homeland Security website. Golf courses are not listed. Now, this is not my fault, and I am done with it, because it is causing me great grief. So whatever this court decides to do about the golf courses, that they think they have the power to do, and if you senators think you have the power to tell them they can do, they're gonna do, and that's fine. I am done with this fight. But my legal opinion is, no one in this county has the authority to overrule, break out of our governor's order.
Can I just, uh, just say, and I don't know what order, I'm looking at the order that I did, this this order says, the this order, the governor's order, does not prohibit people from accessing essential services or engaging in essential daily activities, such as going to the grocery store or gas station provided, or obtaining other essential services, dizzy, bar toning, or fishing, or engaging in physical activities like jogging, bicycling, so long as a necessary precaution or main thing reduces transmission of the virus, and to minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. I don't know, that's the order I have, if it's been updated, I don't, I don't know.
That's the correct order, and you'll notice that golf courses are not listed there. Golf courses are businesses, and they are not on the essential list. I would love to play golf, go play golf. Like I said, I'm done with it, but it is my legal opinion, you don't have the authority to do that.
And if if we don't have the authority, I think we put in there, and this is, and this the the governor's order supersedes this order.
Then why do it? Why confuse the public?
Uh, I, I found out, I did, I, I found out, my heart was down to you, my ears and and we're supposed to be caught in between like that, and uh, I certainly know, I feel for you in it, but I do think that the way the legal is interpreting what the governor is saying, those were the specific ones. He said exercise is life, he expected, and he's trying to reckon all of that, and recognizing that the faith spirit will put the county together. And and actually, I find that most golf courses stay accessible, it's been closed, and and most of the other, like, the flower shops and others, were made open. I mean, I have a track with the Dallas group, which has a very strict, like, and somewhere somewhere, I don't know, I would maybe go with, but the way the governor, the governor wrote that, the way the legal agreed with it, it's not a, a all-inclusive list, it was why they talked about exercise, and and then there's exercise, and whoever signed it, does like it, it says why the airport golf course, and and it's a great award, and and levels, because there is constant uh different people hitting golf, and you got different levels of golf, and that's what the court needs to do, which is take that out, and and it's just run the rhythm of uh of getting corrected by a uh a high authority, and by this, because the latest point is with that, they evolve well within every conversation I've had, and we have daily, because all the organizations out there trying to enforce various things, from the governor's office, the governor's office, the government's books, or management, all of them out there talking on interpretation to lead the intent of social distancing, not to the years of people punishment, uh, for the work.
And the only thing I would say, Senator, is that the things that Commissioner Melvin listed are not businesses, walking, hiking, those are not businesses. Y'all do what you want, I give you my legal opinion, uh, I disagree that every other golf course is is open, I know for a fact that's not correct. Um, I've given my advice, I am simply an advisor here, thank you.
I'm just, it's been hard, and I remember in the spectrum, and the way you handled uh, that part, uh, and and now my children goes on the line, I could find one, or whatever, and uh, we said all of them, so, and and it's the goal, uh, and since I have that as a matter of fact, so, 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 I think, uh, it's just, we don't, we don't have people writing the vice, we don't charge them the job, on the road, uh, but this is, my lawyer gets charged for any case, so, with, with, you know, definitely questionable punishment on exercise here, I think if your exercise, golf, you got to pay to do it, then you can't do it, and it's the only difference is, is whether there's a financial weight problem. Uh, I think there's a lot of last hour time, they all look in intent of what the governor's trying to say, and putting out an order, if if it wasn't likely to move outside of Washington or the bill, the Dallas State song, with all the labor wars, where uh, every possible exception, we must seek the general guidance on what, that's one of the, you just, you try to limit the square, not to, not to limit the, 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 the prayer, uh, they say, they're worried about that, then the example we're doing in the spirit of what the order was, five.
And I think the governor could have helped us, Bob, if he had put that in his order. When he lays it up to every county judge and every mayor, they do get so many different orders out there that the public, I believe, actually gets confused. Well, I can.
The the the, 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 without a blanket order, instead of their flag of battle, and and uh, and that's exactly the exact rules I'm saying, it's supposed to get done in. We 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 straighten the hallways, we're different, that's just why it does, and vice versa, so if the man is a good man, the governor's uh situation.
Okay.
So, I I I really appreciate that, given, given the, 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 the president has that, that clear.
I don't, I don't want to focus just on golf, because that's the thing, so you've got walking, uh, uh, we've got hiking, uh, we've got tennis, I mean, uh, there's other exercises that that can be done here that that, uh, you're not going to congregate in these exercises.
Right, right, they're, they're all, I'm congregating.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Bob, for joining us. Any other questions for Bob? Any other discussion? Thank you, Bob, for for your input.
All right, if you have a question you want to talk to me, call, there's my cell phone here, uh, uh, now, you got the, uh, the, uh, the number is two one four six three two one three nine one, uh, call me with any question, I'd be glad to talk to you, uh, and if I don't have, and if you have an answer, I'll give my best, that's what we said, we respect that, please, by giving answers to questions, uh, so there's, there's an endless supply of questions, and so I'm sure it's a good one.
Okay, thank you, sir. You have a good day.
You're good, bye.
Any, any other discussion, point of admission?
No, I mean, I agree with Tom, though. I did. Except I'm, I'm making a living in sports, I understand golf courses, they're set together, but I, I feel like I'm, and no one, you can go left, you can see for this, but you know, I can tell the course, everything.
No, I'm, yeah, no, I'm, there's always those from golf, John Walk and Johnny Walkson. I mean, I understand my version of golf, I understand what you're trying to do, they're set together.
There, 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 whether there is legal or not, every county around us draw off, and you can, you can make tennis, for example, there's places that you can go, and you have to lease that court, there, there are buildings, so, and if you use that logic, then that's, if you can't go play tennis on that course, because you gotta pay somebody money, but you go out and play a game on your private tennis court, or go down to school and you can play tennis.
And there's public courses that you can't.
And, and, right now, like in, so, I mean, there's social distancing.
Absolutely not.
They're, they're, they're getting out in sunshine, it's that, they, and there's no plan golf, or just going to Spade County, or going to Calton County.
They're going to Spade County, they're, they're losing their mind, they're seeing the capacity of, of all these chromophyres, it's a hot topic. There could be a lot of license laws bringing this from Spade County, right, and, and, too. Our people are going over here and bringing the powers back.
Then they, they should be, no, uh, we should, we should have essential outdoor activities. And that's what this is all about, having essential outdoor activities. Just like Commissioner Keith, here's what he's saying, you know, for example, tennis, people like to play tennis, we've, we've got, there's nothing in here, we, we can't. As long as social distancing is main thing, uh, we should have all these exercises, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, uh.
Have you drove down the streets, Virgil, Edmond, Will's born, Grant's Lane, Bane? Those kids are running down in circles like they're a playground. There ain't no social distancing going on.
I know.
Zero. And you tell me that you get out to a golf course, you get a bunch of people out there drinking cold beer, and everything that they're doing, that they're going to do that social distancing? No, they're not. It's not gonna happen. I'm just telling you, I drive down a city street to Van, Grant's Lane, everywhere else, and I'm telling you right now, it's like a playground. It's like a shirt, say yesterday, it's a playground. Because guess what mom and daddies are doing right now? They're tired of these kids getting in the house, underling them. The schools are trying to give them homework, and trying to do all this stuff, it doesn't matter if they do it or not, they're still on the pass, you can't fathom them. These kids are running everywhere. I drive down the Diggum County roads, I got kids five or six in my bicycle, where they at? Are they doing the social distancing? No, your parents are not pulling your hair out. Guess what? Schools are over with, they're done, they're not going back to school, you know, that's, so, but, but, they're gonna be on summer break for six months. This is not political fun here, guys, that's what we're doing.
People have to have exercise.
They need exercise, they want to go down the streets.
So the, to discover, consider a fervent or amended, the first amended proclamation to track a local disaster, is there?
I'm like a motion that we amend it, including section seven, uh, of the, the article that I proposed.
I'll say that, I'll vote now. Okay. Have a motion, Bob, Mr. President, second, uh, Commissioner Pearson, so, you're, you're saying add the two sections seven, or?
I'm saying that, or, say, where is it? You'd have to put that in.
Okay, we have a section seven, you'd have to, you'd have to add sections, you'd have to change social distancing. And remove, so add this as section seven, engaging in other essential outdoor activities provided that individuals comply with social distancing requirement of six feet, for example, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, golfing, and tennis, list them. Governor's order supersedes this one. So you're saying put that as section seven, and then remove the rest of that section seven, the current section seven, would become eight, and remove.
That's what I proposed, and I, I'd like to add something to that, I'd like to add hunting. I want to, I want to, I want people to do everything.
Okay, so you're saying, I'm, I'm gonna add, you're amending your motion.
Yes.
To include.
Let's say, just start out with example, hunting, walking, biking. I want people to do everything.
Well, I should say, example, such as, not limited to.
I'm all for that.
Oh, yeah. But not, uh.
You could put it separate.
There's, there's any kind of of outdoor activity, long as you're social distancing, that is allowed.
Okay, how do you want it worked?
Let's, uh, let's word it, uh, well, let's be specific, uh, let's just add, add hunting Example, hunting, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, golfing, and tennis, that's what, that's paid out of them. What do you think?
I'm good with everything with the golf, I have a lot of recognition for being, what she's saying on the governor's.
Well, if, if, if somehow the legal stuff comes out, we got in here, this is our supersede, then then it's no good.
May I say something else, gentlemen? I'm sorry. Yeah, um, so I just went and checked in Dallas, Dallas County, uh, they have shut down all their municipal courses, which is what I thought they have, and that's why I made the statement to the senator that I choose to shut down. They have shut down all their municipal courses, um, some of the country clubs have chosen to stay open, Dallas County has put it in their order that they can, so they have found a way, that they think they can do it in spite of the governor's order, so, there are lawyers out there, a lot's wonderful, and I don't, I don't want to be all this all, just, the one who, who, gives the good for Grand St. Brown, so I just want y'all to have full information on that. Um, Dallas County, I just went up and checked, that's where I've been, and uh, uh, they did add golf to their order, I don't know how, like I said, to me, the governor's order is clear, but I want y'all to have full information when you make your decision.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. And, uh, we appreciate from the county judge and the commissioner's court, everything, it is not easy.
Yeah, and and I know, guys, and I'm not here for, for, for accolades or anything, I'm just trying to do what is, what the law says. Uh, you were in the meeting yesterday, Judge, it, it's gonna get worse, and, and, and something is gonna cause it to get worse, um, and we don't know what that might be, but I want to make sure that I give you guys full information when you make your decisions. So that's the state of Dallas County, um, for whatever that's what.
Thank you, I very much appreciate that. Now, I would just like to include hunting in this thing, so let's, let's get it all in there, as citizens, uh, have access to this, if they choose to do so, as long as, as they, uh, comply with social distancing, that's, that's the main key here.
One, just for Claire, one, uh.
What is my motion, what is my motion is to add a section seven in our order, and move, uh, uh, rename section seven, which is social distancing, to section eight, and on down the line, section nine, move, move everything up one number, and what is section seven, engaging in other essential activ, uh, engaging in other essential outdoor activities, providing the individual compliant with social distancing requirement of six foot, six feet, for example, running, walking, biking, hiking, running, fishing, golfing, and tennis, unless the governor's order supersedes this order.
That is the motion, uh, is a, is a second, yeah, motion is second, any other discussion? Be it none, all in white or say aye?
Uh.
Those opposed?
I, I oppose to the orders that are, that are heading against golf, you know, and I'm good with everything, but that, but you, you oppose, you oppose them up here, your vote is not, not, on the motion.
Okay. Two far, one against, motion fair. Is our motion good, or, so, that motion, uh, is it second? Second, second, all in white or say aye? Your order.